Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, that you can pause for a minute, just to rest in peace. We thank you that you have given us safety and warmth and health. God, so many in our state are still suffering from the hurricane that came through. We pray for those people who are in need. Their governments, they're helping me, the mayor's helping me. I pray, Father, for this meeting here tonight, Lord, that you would just guide me through lines and miles and things that are said. We pray for each city official that you would help and seek you, Lord, and be after the call. And that you would preside over all things that's on this line in the name of Jesus. We pray.
Would you please remain standing? We, Councilman John Abernathy, would like to have a special prayer for one of our employees.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before your throne right now. We just lift up our employee, Mr. Kent Bowden. Father, as he is struggling for his life right now, we just pray that you would touch him in a special way, that you would heal his body and that he would make a full recovery for himself. Father, we lift up his wife Rhonda and his family as they are by his side. We just pray for comfort and peace for each one of them. We lift up his coworkers at this time because we know that they are struggling with their coworker being in such bad shape. So, Father, we just lift them all up to you right now, and we just pray that you would just provide whatever's needed and that we're going to be able to praise you when this is all done. Father, we just pray that you'd be with us throughout this meeting and guide each one of us in Jesus' name.
May be seen. Our first thing we have to address is the approval of our agenda. And at this time, I would entertain a motion from council to add to our agenda, which is citizens to be heard, as item number seven. Second, I have a motion in a second to move Adam, citizens to be heard, as item seven on our agenda tonight. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next, item is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of September the ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our work session meeting of September the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that both sets of minutes, to approve September the ninth and September twenty-fourth.
Okay, I have a motion that approval of the minutes for both A, city council regular meeting of September the ninth, and our work session meeting of September the twenty-fourth. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, and again, it is unanimous. Next, item is the mayor's comments. And I would like to begin by saying how great it is to be back at work. I still have several health issues to deal with, but I am optimistic and hopeful that they can be resolved soon. First, I want to thank all of our city employees, citizens, and all organizations that assisted the city on the repairs and cleanup after our third storm since the spring of two thousand twenty-three. Our city has always been very resilient, and this support is what makes the difference. It is a welcoming aid that helps us in getting our city back to some type of normalcy. The city is looking fantastic at this time. James Parker just finished paving four of our streets, and they look great. When you get a chance, make a trip over to Elm Street, either Melville and Star Street, Brutusel and Bonaja, and feel the difference in the ride now. These street improvements were paid through our power bill money, and our hope is to do more paving when funds are available. Mike Steele has started on the Pink Street repair project. Unfortunately, we have had to divert school traffic to an alternate route until this project is completed. Mr. Steele informed city manager Dalton and I this past week that he is probably looking at several more weeks to finish this project. The city has started cleaning up the storm debris as well as the annual leaf pickup, and we are asking our citizens to give us ample opportunity and time to get this done. The company that we normally rent an extra leaf truck from has unexpectedly gone out of business. We still have our two city trucks running at this point, but it is always a challenge to keep this equipment on the road without any downtime. This past week, city manager Dalton and I took a tour of the new gym. Construction is still going on. The scoreboard has been installed as well as power to the building. The air must run for fourteen days before starting to put down the hardwood floors. The parking lot has been paved and striped, and the playground area has been graded, and preparation to this area has begun also. This project is nearing completion and will be a major attraction for our city and our citizens. Scaryville is scheduled for this Friday night, and we are expecting a crowd of over six thousand that have indicated they will attend, and this is through our online survey. The city will be closing the streets from Mountain and Main for a more efficient and safer event. And this concludes the mayor's comments at this time. We'll move on to item seven now, which is citizens to be heard. Now, any citizen that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and remember, comments will be strictly held to three minutes per person. And I only have one citizen that has signed up to speak at this time, and so I would ask that Mr. John Russell, if you'll come forward, and anyone else will give you a chance later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin my comments by saying it certainly is good to see you back with us.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, glad to have you back. My company is in receipt of a letter from Mr. Dalton thanking us for our years of service and stating that we'll be making a transition to another company called Visual Edge IT. I'm sorry, I don't know who they are. The question, just my comments basically, our company was founded in nineteen ninety-five. We have, we were at that time, could have moved to a larger city. We chose to keep our business here in Cherryville, a home of Carolina freight, where my partners and I worked for over twenty years. We have provided contract services for the city since July first, two thousand and four, and have worked with the city through a number of difficult times and situations, always working as much as possible as a part of the city. I cannot honestly recall ever having received a letter or verbal complaint from any city department concerning our services. To the contrary, every department we have worked with has been very confident in the services we have provided. Our contract states that we charge one and a half to two times the normal hourly rate for services provided outside of our own business hours on holidays and on weekends. We've often provided services at those times in an attempt to avoid interrupting normal city operations. Although applicable, in an effort to assist the city with maintaining their established budget, we have never charged this additional amount for services rendered outside of normal hours. All that being said, September twenty-fourth, we received a letter from Mr. Dalton thanking us for our services and stating in the next couple of months, we will transition to Visual Edge IT again, no matter who they are, and list the gentleman's name and ask for us to work with them in making this transition. This company is located in Monroe. Obviously, we're located right down here on Main Street. We are not aware that the city had any, or any of its departments were dissatisfied with our services, as we have never received any complaints, either verbal or written. It's interesting, this company out of Monroe apparently knows very little about the city of Cherryville and the various, or the various departments in the city, as we, Phoenix Corporate Services, are being asked to train them on the city's departments and operations. Questions to follow: Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever not met the city's requirements for services? The answer to that is a resounding no. Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever not responded to the city's needs in a timely manner? No, and I dare say we can and will respond quicker than any company out of southeast Charlotte. Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever once provided services, has Phoenix Corporate Services ever once not provided services we requested or required? The answer to that is no. Question here is, were all the departments in the city contacted and asked for input as it related to our services before this decision was made to go with the company located in Monroe? I don't know the direct answer, but I dare say to have it against, the answer to that was no. Were members of city council consulted for input as it relates to the services provided by Phoenix Corporate Services before the decision was made to go with the company in Monroe? Again, I don't know the answer to that, but my guess is you were not. If there were any deficiencies in our services, why were we not approached by the city manager and anyone else in the city with these concerns prior to an alternate service provider being employed? Again, I dare say we were not approached concerning deficiencies, because in all honesty, there were none. Our request that any written complaints received from any of the departments be produced, since we have never seen any such documentation. Why was the request for pricing proposals for information technology services not posted on the city's website or announced to the general public for bid submissions? Having provided information technology services to the city for well over twenty years, one would have thought that common courtesy and decency would have dictated that we be approached concerning this matter prior to it occurring, which we were not. Yes, I have some questions. I have multiple questions. Is there a question received from information technology services? If so, I think the sunshine laws being in effect, where we should be able to see those proposals and access that and be viewed by the public. It was my understanding and thought that the city of Cherryville wanted to do business whenever possible with local businesses. That being said, why was a local business, Phoenix Corporate Services, who has been providing services to the city for well over twenty years, and that is located within two city blocks of City Hall, overlooked in lieu of a company whose nearest office is located on the other side of Charlotte and Monroe? Finally, will this new company out of Monroe be opening an office in downtown Cherryville and staffing that office with at least as many members as are currently employed by Phoenix Corporate Services? It should be noted that general police officers often stop by our offices for assistance when they're having issues with their in-vehicle computer equipment or systems. Any delay in services provided by a company located on the other side of Charlotte and Monroe could have a direct impact on public safety, which does not appear to have been taken into consideration. In conclusion, as per the signed contracts dealing in fact between the city and Phoenix Corporate Services, I'm assuming the city will honor their legal obligation and pay out the remaining nine months of their new contract if their intent is to employ another service provider. All that being said, I do have a few questions. Why is the company's charter? And what reason is that person doing this? It's obviously not due to the lack of services Phoenix Corporate Services has provided to the city and its department, or our responsiveness to those needs and requirements for the past twenty years. Otherwise, we would not have remained under contract with the city for over twenty years. I conclude my remarks. And we'd like to have a response.
Thank you, Mr. Brutusel. In response, there's a lot of questions that were brought up at one time. I'm not completely aware of the situation. I can only say that this council doesn't make a lot of the decisions that are made in the city. That's why we have a city manager, is for him to make the correct assessment, the correct answers to employment that goes on. And so, I don't have an answer right off for your questions. I think we could address them once you brought that to our attention, that maybe you need to just set up a meeting with our city manager and discuss any concerns that you have, and hopefully something can be resolved then.
We kind of thought we might have been approached on that prior to having approached the city manager.
Mayor, council, I'll say, you know, this has been going on for a long time, that we've been looking at some of the issues we're having, and a lot of it is, and I agree with you, we do need to sit down and probably have a better face-to-face meeting, but a lot of this comes down to, it's, you know, I'm not the best at the technology stuff by any means, but a lot of it comes down to we are at risk of a lot of cyber attack on a lot of our departments, and we've had issues with multiple people that's been looking at our, specifically at the police department, where we've had issues. That's what we're looking for right now, and that's why we're looking at other companies. And IT Visual is the same company that all of our copiers and printers are contracted through. So, it's a company that we have been doing business with in, I guess, the last two years. So, that's where we're looking at the IT services. But I would gladly sit down with Mr. Brutusel and with the door.
I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, all right. Thank you, city manager Dalton, and thank you, John, for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, and this is special recognition of the Cherryville High School Power Players. And we have our high school athletic director, Matt Powers, and Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager, Emily Winters, who will lead us through this. That's on page twenty-nine in your agenda packets.
We look forward each month to having this celebration with Piedmont Lithium, and we really appreciate their involvement, and we really enjoy coming to celebrate our athletes with you guys monthly. The first athlete we're going to celebrate today, Mr. Jared Varela. Jared, who will go sit down and look there? So, obviously, I'm not the soccer coach. Coach Reed is at work, had an overwork process he had to take care of today, so he left me with his comments. So, the Piedmont Power Player is our monthly award to honor athletes that are going above and beyond in their sport, and so I'm going to read what Coach Reed has already sent for me. So, this is, again, Jared Varela. He is a multi-sport athlete, but he is currently playing soccer. He is the goalkeeper and midfielder. He is a senior this year and will graduate with the class of two thousand twenty-five. Some of the reasons why Jared was chosen for this award is he is a great outstanding, a great outstanding young man with a true understanding of the game of soccer. He takes the initiative to lead the team on and off the pitch, which that's, that is the field. Coach Reed refers to the field as the pitch, and he is selected as one of the captains of the Ironman Soccer Team. Jared is a four-year player, and Coach Reed writes about him that he's probably one of the best goalkeepers in the conference. Although the record does not show it, a lot of times Jared ends up being the, is, or is the last line of defense before they score. So, I don't know what the statistics are, what his numbers are, but I know in a lot of games Jared spends a lot of time engaged, playing, because there are a lot of shots taken on goal, and he defends the majority of them. There are a lot of really good soccer teams in our conference. You guys know some of the charter schools and bigger schools that we play, and so they are soccer schools, and Jared spends most of his time defending those goals for us. One of the last comments that Coach Reed wanted to make sure we shared was Jared never gives up on the field, no matter the outcome. He plays from the start whistle to the end whistle. So, this is chair Ironman Soccer Player Jared Varela.
Congratulations, Jared. Good job.
The soccer team will be in action at home again next Wednesday, if you want to come and cheer on Jared and his classmates and his teammates. They will be playing East Gaston next Wednesday, and that will be senior night for those guys. So, should keep that in mind. Before I introduce the next power player and her coach, I do want to let you know that our fall schedule is winding down. This will be the last full month that we'll have fall schedule, so you have one more football game, which actually is going to be November the first, one more home football game on the schedule, two soccer games, that's the next two Wednesdays. Volleyball plays at home for their last home game tomorrow before they start the conference tournament and possible state playoffs, and then we'll be rolling into the basketball season, the wrestling season, as we move into November. So, excited to have you out. I know many of you come into the games. I see you. Feel free to stop in and say hello, let us know that you're there. We appreciate all those that come and support our athletes. The last athlete we're going to celebrate today, I'm going to call her coach up first, is a female cross-country athlete, and Ms. Callie Cook will come and introduce her.
So, my name's Callie Cook, and Antonia Grex coaches alongside with me. We're the cross-country coaches. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Cameron. Cameron is a junior right now at Gerald High School, and she, this is her third year on the cross-country team, and she, it will be her third year on the track team, and then she's actually taken dance lessons for thirteen years, so she's very athletic. So, she is one of our top runners for cross-country and track. She generally runs the four-by-four, four-by-one, four-hundred-meter, eight-hundred-meter. I know that's a lot of numbers, but she's really fast. And so, my paper says to list three reasons why this athlete should receive this award. So, this is the order that I put them. Number one, Cameron is a terrific runner in cross-country. She came in seventh place this year in our pre-conference run and tenth place in this year's Gaston County meet, and hopefully she'll do really well. Tomorrow, we have our conference meet and then regionals at the end of October. I've also been really proud of her and her leadership because she's only used to a team of three, and we recruited a lot this year, so we have twenty-one players, and she has really stepped up on her leadership role and helped me out. Number two, academically, Cameron has a four-point-seven GPA. She's in the top five at least, I know, right now. She's a wonderful student. She challenges herself with rigorous courses such as AP and college classes. Also, beyond sports, she's a leader in the ballet club and getting that sorted at school, and she's just established a new club called CHSCO, which encourages other students to get involved outdoors in walking, running, and hiking, and that club was her idea. But my third foremost thing about Cameron is she's just an all-around wonderful, wonderful kid. She's a wonderful person, and I have been so proud to get to know her through our season this year. She's willing to do anything I ask of her, and I've asked her a lot this year because I'm new to the sport, but she pushes herself out of her comfort zone in the process of anything I ask. Everything she does, she does in excellence, and she has the sweetest demeanor all the time, and her smile is contagious. So, I'm very honored to recognize her for this award.
I want to thank Cherryville High School Athletic Director, Matt Powers, as well as Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager, Emily Winters, for bringing these students before us. It's such a pleasure to see what's going on in our schools, and we're so glad to have you here so you can see a little bit about our government, and we'll welcome you back anytime. Thank you. While we're doing special recognition, at this time, I want to move to item nine, which is special employee recognition for years of service, and I see that Clarence Powers is here. If you'd come forward, please. I didn't know whether you'd recognize Clarence or not. Everybody has called you noodles. This is one of our employees. Now, he just moved from street, from uptown, working with day-to-day, and then where are you working now?
I went to Park and Rec.
You went to Park and Rec, okay. This certificate is awarded to Clarence Powers in recognition of five years of service to the city of Cherryville, and it's signed by city manager Brian Dalton and mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations, Clarence Noodles. Okay. Let's turn it this way, so. Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
What's that on the big bank account, Clarence?
He used to be the first thing I breathed every morning when I go into work. He'd be out there already working. Okay, we'll move on to item ten, and this is consideration of budget amendments, and our city manager Brian Dalton will lead us through that, and that's going to be pages thirty-one and thirty-two in your agenda packets.
Yes, mayor, council, the first one, if you'll remember, we were awarded one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for water and sewer improvement. When we were originally awarded that grant, the administrative cost that was going to go to DEQ was fifty thousand dollars, but the state legislators have changed that, where DEQ only gets about twenty-five thousand. So, we have to redo the budget ordinance resolution. We're starting to submit payments now. We've completed Keystone Fund Station, so when we went to submit that, they told us we needed to do another resolution of this, this grant proposal. So, this is just, it's still the same amount, but it's just, we get to keep twenty-five thousand dollars more than we would originally have to pay in administrative costs. We need that one passed, and the other one is a budget amendment, and it's related to the Keystone Fund Station. We had already paid some funds out of our money, out of Water and Sewer Fund, to start Keystone projects, so we'll reimburse from the grant once we get that back, and then the other part of it is the twenty-five thousand extra that we get to keep that comes up to the eighty-nine thousand.
Have any questions from any council member for city manager Brian Dalton in concerns for the budget amendments?
I'd like to just ask one quick thing. The twenty-five thousand, Brian, are you anticipating that the project may require spending some of that twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, we'll end up spending the entire amount, yes, ma'am. So, now, instead of having one million six hundred thousand to spend, we're going to have one million six hundred twenty-five thousand. So, we'll figure something out as far as improvements to spend on it. I said, the only one that we've completed so far, we've submitted proposals to DEQ and had all those approved, but the only one that we've actually completed right now is the Keystone Fund Station.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions from any council member? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the budget amendments as they were presented at this time.
Make a motion that we adopt the amendments as presented.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the budget amendments as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and there is none. Okay, we'll move to item eleven, which is consideration of the resolution in reference to our local water supply plan, and again, our city manager Brian Dalton will lead us through that. That's pages thirty-three. All opposed, there is none. It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item 12, and this is Consideration of Annexation Ordinance in Regards to Dollar Tree at 2301 Lenkington Highway. That's GIS parcel number 312590. We have our planning and zoning director, Richard Ehlum, here, who will lead us through that, and that's pages 40 through 51.
Good evening. Since our last city council meeting, the parcel was advertised in the Eagle section of the Lincoln Times News, giving notice of tonight's public hearing on Tuesday, October the 1st. It only had to be advertised one time.
Richard, excuse me a second. I did not put public hearing on there, spelled it out, but it is a public hearing, so we need a motion to go into a public hearing.
Oh, okay, it wasn't on there.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Now, a motion and a second to go into public hearing at this time? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are considered in public hearing?
Yes, sir. Also, the notice that tonight's public hearing were mailed to all adjacent property owners, so if anyone wanted to jet or anything, get the big group, I don't want to say. So, I'll go through the, about the same thing we did with the last meeting, so that everyone will know what's going on. So, on Wednesday, September the 4th, the owner of 2301 Lenkton Highway, parcel ID number 312590, applied for voluntary annexation of this property. Page 40, your general is the petition checklist to start the process of the voluntary annexation. The parcel is contiguous to the city limits of Ace Hardware, which is directly west of this parcel. Then you go to pages 41 through 44, it's a voluntary annexation petition. It is signed by the property owner and also by City of Churros, page green. And that's one we mentioned also tonight, we have representing the property owner, Mr. Larry Bearden. He's with, he's one that started this, the whole process back in, I think it was October, November last year, and he's, he's still on it, working it up for now. Pages 45, 46, is a copy of the North Carolina General Law Order. Page 47 is a copy of the map from Gassington GIS showing the parcel is outlined in red and highlighted in yellow, and it shows you that's the parcel that needs to be annexed under the city limits. Page 48 is just an additional map that I obtained from Gassington GIS showing that the parcel belongs to Piedmont Companies. Page 49 is just another description of the parcel. And lastly, pages 50 and 51 is the ordinance that the city council asked for to have this parcel annexed as part of the Churros city limits.
Okay, do I have any questions from any council member for planning and zoning director Ehlum?
The Piedmont Companies, that's, they are not connected in any way with the Piedmont Lithium. That's totally separate.
No.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Do I need to read that now, therefore it be ordained by the city council if we vote? First of all, I would ask that if there's any citizen that would like to speak concerning this, since we're still in public hearing. Any citizen that would like to speak concerning this? If not, then I have a motion to exit public hearing at this time?
Make a motion to exit public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds to exit public hearing at this time? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. We are out of public hearing at this time. We're open for discussion. Do I need to read the, after we vote?
I think, Mayor, it's part of the, the public record, this, the whole ordinance, but it won't, it won't hurt.
Okay, which is page 51?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't.
You don't have to read all of page 50 if that's what you're asking.
No, it's just...
Yeah.
Word of action is taken. Okay. Okay, if I have no other questions, I would entertain a motion to either vote for or against the ordinance to annex this parcel into the city limits?
Make a motion, go ahead, vote for, annexing this parcel into the city limits.
Okay, and we do emphasize that it's a voluntary annexation, okay?
Second.
Now, the motion and a second to vote for the ordinance to annex this parcel into the city limits. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item 13. This is Other Business. Do I have anything from council that they would like to bring for the citizens tonight under Other Business?
I, I just, I should know the answer to this, but I don't now that we're talking about annexations. The, the property where Walmart is, it's inside the city. Does it go all the way up where Scooters is? Is all that inside?
Yes, ma'am.
All the way to 150?
Yes, ma'am.
All of that's in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I need, that's the question I had.
The old Kaiser Chevrolet is not in the city.
The old Kaiser Chevrolet is not in the city.
The intersection at, in front of Walmart is not in city limits.
Stoplight there.
Stoplight, that whole, that entire intersection is outside the city.
Okay, now, 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 come on, say that one more time.
Well, the main chariot.
The intersection, the main intersection, that is not inside the city. City limit stops right in front of, right about Ace Hardware, prior to the new Dollar Tree, and nothing on, uh, nothing on Highway 150 is inside the city limits, all the way past Walmart.
Walmart's in the city.
Walmart's in the city.
150 is not.
Yeah, the roadway is not.
Or the right side of the road.
Right side of the road.
Like it's...
No, but, 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 but you have jurisdiction at 150. I mean, you have jurisdiction, police have jurisdiction on all the streets that they own.
We have ETJ, Highway Patrol, it's all the rest, from Ace Hardware to, to Walmart.
Yeah, I understand that, that, that property's not in the city, but... Okay, Jan, that's required.
I have a couple things, just want to make sure you got on your to-do list. Go ahead. One is, that's right, you know, that parking lot at Depot.
We are working on that. Our, one of our contractors that we're trying to get to look at that, he has been working in the map a lot.
I'm sure, that's what I'm saying, just put it on your to-do list, make sure it's on there when all this gets taken care of. And another one that...
Can you explain where that is?
Yeah, Depot, where we put the new sign up, that parking lot, right there.
From Depot, across from Bean Construction. Or Gem, Katie Martin's to be.
Okay, I was looking down at the, where we worked on the...
It's a nice parking lot, but it's a mess on football. It used to be shot that on Square Park. The other, we really need to get some mulch at Rotary Park.
We're looking at, hopefully, what we want to do is put mulch there, and over at Rambar, when we get them in there to start on the pickleball court, we're going to try to put all of that and get mulch in both of our main playground areas.
There's been some vandalism there. Someone went in and left a bunch of trash, and they smeared mud on a lot of the implements there.
Is that at Rotary Park?
Yeah. So, it needs some attention, and y'all get a chance.
We're going to put mulch at the gym, too, aren't we?
Yes, we will. Actually, you know, talking about the gym, I actually met with a contractor today to look at building a sign. I've been working with the Summer family. They picked out one that they like, and we're looking at, you know, build two brick columns with the same brick that's at the gym, and, you know, attach the sign there. You know, if you pull in for the gym and you go about halfway, there's two areas there you'll see that it's going to be natural area.
The rear bottoms out.
That's what we're looking at, building the sign.
While we're talking about signs, are we anywhere toward getting the one replaced down at Hill Mary's Park?
Hill Mary's Park, yes, we do need a sign out there.
Not there.
We had talked to Mr. Lael about that a while back, but I've not got the sign.
Okay, anything else from council? Okay, if not, from staff? Anything from staff under Other Business?
Talking about the gym, we, we still made some more progress today. They hung the, the basketball dolls, sort of hanging them today, so it's coming. Hopefully, like I said, we'll probably go out about three, four days now with power, so about 12 more days maybe, we'll hopefully start building forward and starting to get to the end here at the gym.
I was amazed at the, the lights inside that gym. They go off automatically if no one's in there.
They do, they do.
And they come on, and I thought, well, that's going to burn them out faster, but they got sensors on there, and it's, I think it's a restriction through, Rust could probably answer that. Is that a restriction when you put power in now?
Yeah, it's a code that you have to...
Yeah, it's one of the codes. They have to do that. Yeah, that's odd, if you're standing in the gym, there's only two. It was me and Brian and a couple workers, and the lights kept going off, and we said, oh, no, we just put these lights in and they're shorting out, but that wasn't the case. It's just because we weren't in that area of the gym.
Once you get more people in there, you know, they, they all come on, and they, they come on, they're a lot brighter, but they will be a little dimmer as well when people are not in certain areas.
Brian, will you describe what kind of fence you're going to use next to the residential?
I've talked to the residents, and I've got some contractors give the price, and we're looking at putting up a solid wood fence that will be painted.
Very good.
And that's on both sides.
Very good.
But now, as the playground equipment, it will be a metal?
Playground, the playground, if you turn into the parking lot, the playground will be right there on your left-hand side, and we'll put a black chain link fence around there.
Right behind Michael Delany's house, right there. That's where the playground is. And it is going to be called the Larry and Carolyn Summer Recreation Complex.
So, the residents are okay with the, with the fence and how hot it's going to be and all that? Michael's good?
I talked to Michael specifically, of course.
Good.
That was his main thing is...
Yeah, we, we've had a couple of conversations.
And we're, we're about ready to start on the fence, but we have to wait until they take up the silt fence, and they have just a little bit more grading they're going to have to do specifically on the right hand side of the road at the parking lot there. That, that bank will get cut out a little bit more before they can do that as well.
And we'll have grass from there all the way down to the gym, along the wooden fence?
Yes, yes. And, you know, the side, on the right-hand side, you know, it will go down, and then it'll, it'll turn towards the house, the old house that was out there as well. That way, that neighbor gets privacy, and they don't have people coming through their driveway.
It's going to be a beautiful facility.
It's turned out nice. If you have to go walk around it, I urge you to put it nice.
Okay, anything else from staff?
Nothing further from staff.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for adjournment? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. We are out.